Counselor Watson and Mayor Flax, you have six present.
Thank you.
That is a quorum.
Thank goodness. Gail, can you lead us in the pledge of the flag? All right, thank you.
And a one, and a two.
Pledgees to the flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Recognitions, awards, and memorials, we have three proclamations this week that were read. Twenty seventeen zero zero eighty, a proclamation honoring Dr. Melvin Jeff Spence. Proclamation oh one oh six, celebrating Groton Little League opening day. And zero one one one, a proclamation recognizing Earth Day. The one for Dr. Spence was sent to their event. The one for Groton Little League was read by Harry at opening day. And the proclamation recognizing Earth Day was read by Harry at Avery Point. We also are going to recess for a public hearing on the ARC Neighborhood Assistance Act program application. Betsy, would you want to read the ad in the paper? Was there an ad in the paper?
I hear there was. There was, sorry.
Read the notice of public hearing?
Yes, there was a, the Groton Town Council will conduct a public hearing on the following Neighborhood Assistance Act program proposal. There are new London County Inc. attic installation and heat pump installation for twenty-nine thousand nine hundred and sixty-eight. This will be on Tuesday, May 2nd, two thousand seventeen, at seven thirty PM, Town Hall Annex, Community Room One, one thirty-four Groton Long Point Road. And then that was placed in the New London Day as a display ad on Friday, April twenty-eighth, two thousand seventeen.
Thank you very much. We are recessing for the public hearing. Are there anybody signed up to speak? Are there any presentations, Mark, that need to be made?
Yes. Mr. Representative from ARC?
Go right up to the lectern, please. The lectern?
Here's your chance.
Hi, I'm at the lectern. Where did Betsy go?
Are you Penny?
I am Penny.
Welcome aboard, Penny.
Thank you. Do I just?
Yeah, go right into it.
Launch right in? Thank you for hearing our request. My name's, I'm Penny Newberry, I'm the Director of Development for the ARC New London County. We have offices, the main office is in Norwich. We have an office in, off of Benham Road, it's called the Employment Transition Center in the Sacred Heart complex there. We serve about a hundred people there. Altogether, we have about six hundred and fifty participants with intellectual and developmental disabilities throughout southeastern Connecticut. We operate fourteen supported group homes, serving about sixty-five people. We have group and supported employment services as well, along with day service options, a lot of stuff. And the Community Life and Advocacy Program, which has a volunteer corps, and the folks go out and do a lot of civic engagement in the community. The mission of the ARC is equal participation and full equality. We are interested in obtaining some Neighborhood Assistance Act funds for a project in one of our supported residences. It's, I think that it's in the application, it's at forty-five Hill Crest Road, which is off of Long Hill Road. And I could talk about that if you'd like. This is a, it's an older home that, I just started at the ARC a few months ago. I don't know how long the ARC has been in there, but it's been several years. There are five residents in there, men and women. Some have more, some have more medical issues than others, but all are, I don't think any of them are in group or individual supported employment at this point. Their disability is such that they use the day service option, and they, there are a lot of activities that go on. There's a robust staff out of, you know, regulations from the Department of Developmental Services, so there are always folks on site. The house is old and its heating system is old. It is very costly to run, and we've found that it's not heating the building adequately. There are six, five to six bedrooms in the house, and one of the bedrooms is not used right now. We're trying to use it as a common room, but in the winter, nobody wants to use it because there's no heat in there. Socialization is really important for the residents, and we'd like them to, you know, form a family. And they just don't want to get out of their rooms in the wintertime, and that's bad. It's also conducive to a lot, a little more illness, colds and the flu and stuff. And with client, with the clients with significant medical issues, this is not a great thing. So one of the things that we did was we had the nice folks at Groton Utilities send some people over and did a really thorough energy evaluation. And they plugged up a lot of holes and did a lot of things, and made some recommendations about what we should do for this house. And one of the things that they said would really do a lot of good towards plugging up all of the holes and making the house more energy efficient was to insulate the attic. And so the other thing that they recommended was changing the heating system to heat pumps. So we got three bids, and they were all very thorough. And that's where we came up with the price that I gave you for the five heat pumps. I can go over exactly what the configuration is, if you'd like.
If you need to, I mean, if you want to, you could, but...
But that's where the cost comes from. The, I don't remember if on the attic installation was seven thousand two hundred and forty-five dollars, and the installation of the heat pump system, which was going to deliver some really nice and uniform heat throughout the building, and save significant amount of money on the heating bill, was twenty-two thousand seven hundred and twenty-four dollars. For a total of twenty-nine nine sixty-eight, of which the ARC could contribute two thousand dollars, because that's what we've got. So we were hoping that we could find a C Corporation that would fund this. But I, we need your permission to go ahead with that. I'm sure I've missed a lot of stuff, and if you have any questions, you can ask me.
I actually have a client that lives there.
Excuse me?
I have a client that lives there.
Oh, okay.
So I've been in that house a number of times. It's a well-kept place, but it is older housing stock, it's a conventional home, being used for residents. And like every other home, every few years, it needs work. So I'd be, I'm in support of this, if it comes to it.
Anybody else have any questions? Is there anybody else who would like to speak in this public hearing? Gail? Okay. All right. Penny, thank you very much for coming.
I have a bunch of information for you, if you guys want it. We have annual reports and lots of brochures, and if you need your lawn cut, we have a landscape crew.
You leave it with Mark, and then we can...
Because Mark's grass is getting cut off.
I can distribute it to everybody.
Thank you very much. That's it? You're welcome to stay all night if you... Thank you very much. That will close this public hearing. Anybody have any questions? That goes to receipt of citizens' petitions, comments, and concerns. This is the portion of the council agenda where the council welcomes comments from citizens. Each presentation should be limited to five minutes or less, and citizens should, if possible, submit written comments. Presentation should be related to matters pertinent to Groton. Town councillors will only ask questions in order to clarify the speaker's presentation and can respond during the responses to citizens' petitions portion of the town council meeting. Citizens should make their presentations from the lectern and state their names and addresses for the record. Is there anybody signed up for citizens' petitions? Would anybody like to speak during citizens' petitions? Please step to the lectern.
My name's Gail Good, and I live at twenty-four Fort Hill Road, Apartment One. And having been unable to attend the meeting April twenty-sixth at the senior center, I did try listening to it on YouTube. And I was very unclear as to what the final decision was regarding Virginus Court. Let's talk about what I'm talking about first, Virginus Court. I did hear Mr. Murawski make a motion to let, leave it as it is. And eventually, he withdrew that motion, and then, it's kind of back and forth, back and forth. So, being very concerned, and by the way, my name is at the bottom of all those petitions, Mr. Ofinger, and if there's a question about anybody who's on there, you certainly should investigate, if that's a problem for you. I also was the one who gave out the flyers about coming to the meeting that was held on the twenty-second of March. And I don't recall telling anybody they shouldn't. As a matter of fact, most people weren't even home. And I resent being told a liar by anyone in this room, because that's what you were saying. And if you can't prove it, then I don't think you should say it, because I too was a public employee, accountable to the public, for being truthful and honest. But my main question is, what is the final, what was the decision you came to on the twenty-sixth? I really was going back and forth, everybody was talking, I understand that, because I talk a lot too. How did it end?
Bonnie?
I'll give a go.
Yes, ma'am.
Since I was, I think I made the motion for that. I thought that we should do a little bit more design work and see if there was some other alternate solution. And I don't know what you're talking about, as far as being called a liar. I do not recall that.
At the close of last month's meeting, this young lady, Ms. Paris Dadi, jumped at the end and says, "By the way, I got a call from so-and-so who said that the people who are distributing the flyers told them not to show up," and I quote. And that was, that didn't happen. And if that did happen, then I like to face my accuser, because I was there, Alan was there, you weren't. So, and also, okay, I'm sorry, go ahead. That was the answer to that question.
So, okay, so I did not, I did not remember that.
That was the last thing she shot in before the meeting ended.
Rich?
I agree with Counselor Bonnie Knoll said, except I put a clause in there that says that the Virginus Court would remain open, and they would do whatever alternative means they could. And that's the way it went.
Right, and then on top of that, someone says, "But that would happen anyway," or, you know, words to that effect, you know? So it was very ambiguous to me. So what you're telling me is...
We asked them to go back to DOT and look at if there's some other alternative specifically that night. I suggested that they take that median that's right at the corner, all the way back, and then have a turn into Virginus, and a right turn only out.
Well, I've spoken to the DOT as well, you see, because I know many people in the Department of Transportation. I am a retiree from the state of Connecticut, and I am very familiar with the way some of these things work. And they were of the opinion that they were used as the scapegoat to scare citizens into thinking that this is a fait accompli, and there's nothing you can do about it or say about it. And I know better than that, and I know you all don't mean that to be the way it is. But I just, I don't know, I just don't understand. Five accidents were included in that package, that wonderful Mr. Schneider, and I do appreciate him giving me that packet. There are five accidents in there between two thousand ten and two thousand thirteen. And that does not justify the worst traffic problem in Groton, as far as I can see. There are much, you know, people don't even stop at red lights anymore, they go right through. There are accident potentials everywhere. This climate has changed since two thousand four, we've had a recession. That field is there, and it attracts a lot of people, and that's fine, and that's wonderful. I was on that committee too, to make sure that it didn't come out to be some kind of a mess. And it's lovely, it is lovely. But many things have happened. Every, I work right on that road at Ackley's, and I observe what happens at that crosswalk. Nineteen years I've been watching it. And if, every summer, there's at least six or seven or eight Friday nights when there's an accident on ninety-five. So that means every exit between eighty-six and ninety gets affected, and they come right by our store. And that does cause a problem, but there's nothing you can do about that. There are more highways on the, cars on the highway now than ever. There's nothing we can do about that. People have three and four cars, they go to Mystic, they go to Groton Long Point, Monferry Cove. There's nothing you can do about that. I don't care where you put the exit and entrance, there's going to be traffic. And the crosswalk, two people were injured in those five incident reports. They were both standing in the middle of the crosswalk, which I believe is the law that you stop for people in the crosswalk. So I still, none of us understands why Virginus Court is accountable for crosswalks, and whether they're there or anywhere else. It's the speed on the road which does not seem to be want, you don't seem to want to deal with that, which would cost you nothing. We have police officers, very fine ones. And Route One runs all the way to New York. Matter of fact, it goes to Florida. And my five minutes are up. But thank you very much, so I'm going to stick by what you said. I will get the recording, and I will keep it, and I will note for the future. Thank you very much, Ms. Knoll.
Thank you for coming in.
Would you like to speak? Step right up.
How is everybody this evening?
Good.
Good, how are you?
Nanette Wilson, eleven twenty-five Flanders Road, Mystic, Connecticut. There's a couple of things that I wanted to talk to, talk about tonight. But Gail pretty much covered the Virginus Court question I had. I was at the meeting, so I pretty much understand where we're at right now with Virginus Court. I just hope that in a couple of months, you know, I don't wake up and drive down there, and they're down there, you know, paving it in anyways. I mean, that's my feeling towards the whole situation. But anyways, I want to talk about the Fourth of July Parade. I was really shocked last year. I found out probably, I don't know, two or three weeks before the parade, you know, it was supposed to be held. It was gonna, we were moving it down to South Road. So I had guests coming in, we'd do it, I've done it my whole life. And I don't think any, no one really knew, no one really knew. So of course, I was frantic. I called Harry, he knows, we had a conversation. And nothing against Harry or anybody else, no one just, no one seemed to have any answers for, you know, why. Now, I was told that it was because budgets and, you know, we need to have police at one, I don't know, Virginus Court, the bottom of Fort Hill, Depot Road, North Road, and that was just out of the budget. We couldn't, we couldn't do that. Then I found out from the RTM that we had five thousand dollars sitting in a special summer events fund. I don't even know, is that something that you guys are aware of? Is there five thousand dollars sitting in a special summer event fund?
Not a distinct line that I know of.
Sorry?
It's not, it's not a distinct line. You can state your...
Okay.
Let me answer your answer.
Okay, so there's this five thousand dollars, this is what I found out, five thousand dollars sitting in this fund for special, you know, special summer events. And I was trying to figure out, why wouldn't we use that? I mean, that's a summer event that we enjoy. I don't, I don't live in Puquonic Bridge anymore, but I grew up there. And everyone I love and care for lives there or came from there. I just, I guess I'm just really disappointed. I mean, first, you guys closed Fitch Middle, my son was there when you closed Fitch Middle. I was just so upset about that. That's a whole nother story. And then you take away the parade, Fourth of July Parade, that was really upsetting to me. And it's like, when we have something to say about it, we're not allowed to have a voice down there. That's what it feels like. I'm just letting you know what it feels like. It feels like whatever we say, it doesn't matter what you guys say, because you guys are in this tax bracket. I think that's the idea that everybody's getting. And it's, it's just, it's just disrespectful. It's really disrespectful. So now, you know, we're off to closing Virginus Court. Fitch Middle, take away Fourth of July Parade, nobody has anything to say, we can't say anything about it, it's just what it is. That's it, that's how we feel. We say something, it doesn't matter, doesn't matter what you get, we're doing it. So now, Virginus Court, they want to close that, because that's a Dane, whatever. And now, I mean, Clodchester. So I guess what I'm saying is that it just seems like you want that whole area to disappear. That's what it seems like, that's what it feels like to people. And anyone you ask down there will say that, that's what they're going to say, because I've asked people down there. So I just, I'm trying to figure out, how do we have a, how do we go about having a voice coming from Puquonic Bridge? I mean, you can close down, you can have this idea that you want to take and redirect traffic to Exit Eighty-Nine to go to downtown Mystic, and people will go, people went eight, you know, forty, fifty, sixty, whatever it was, and that's it. It's not going to happen, that is it. Virginus Court, we get over five hundred people, five hundred people to sign this petition, and then we're called basically liars, these aren't real, these aren't real signatures, you know? Really, take a look at the people who signed those signatures, and that's exactly what this gentleman said here. I just think it's disrespectful. And I'm just trying to figure out, since you guys are the council, how do we go about having a voice in that area?
Thank you. Responses to citizens' petitions? Just going to get it out. Okay, I got it. The word of it in Harry.
Thank you, first of all, for coming, because it's very rare that somebody actually puts together and says, "This is the impression." This is the impression that we get, okay? The way you have a voice is what you just did. Would it help if I tried to give you what my view was? I'll offer it anyway. I'll start with the easy one. I was one of the people that pointed out that on the petitions, and mind you, I understand what the petitions was, Gail. I saw your name, I saw your name, Gail. What the petitions was, was a way to say, "Look at all these people who support our position, which is don't close Virginus." I got that. I think I made one comment, which was, Rich was on there, and he doesn't live in that area, okay? I got it, I got it. And there were other people that are not from Groton, that's all that I said, that's all that I said. But it doesn't matter, because you're not out there to meet some sort of a minimum number of signatures. So it doesn't matter that five people might be from New London, it doesn't matter to me. All I see is, a lot of people say, "Don't do it." As far as Virginus Court itself is concerned, it doesn't go through unless we say it's going through, all right? We didn't say it's going through. Now, some of us felt like it should be permanently shelved, other people said, "Well, not so fast." So the consensus was, not going to go forward, but not going to be permanently shelved, okay? Which doesn't answer all your wishes, but it's for today, that's what's going to happen. The schools, there were, as I recall, this is all Board of Ed thing, and I don't want to shift everything over to the Board of Ed, but it's true, the Board of Ed, they run the schools. There were a lot of meetings and hearings and about which one of the three, and I was there for this when they had the three middle schools, which one was on the chopping block? And every one of the schools had a contingent. In the end, the Board of Ed decided that Fitch Middle, the older one, for whatever their reasons were, that would be one of the three that would close, and everything would be consolidated, okay? Clodchester, I mean, I know it seems like this is a string of, string of coincidences. I'm telling you, it is not a plan, it is not a plan. And as far as the parade goes, I think there was probably a miscommunication. I understood afterwards that the route was shortened because of the budget thing. There was also a to-do about whether or not we would be having the fireworks at Fort Griswold, same issue. You know, we chopped dollars out of things, and that was, these are the things that go. So the parade route was shortened. And I remember people afterward saying, "But we always line up over here, this is our spot on the route, and you move the thing down the road, where are we supposed to go now? This is a grave disappointment." So there was a parade, it was shorter, I don't know what could have been done. Probably something should have been done to say, "Hey, for all you people that line up over here and have been lining up for years, it ain't going to happen." Or we find some money to actually keep the thing that's long. But for whatever it's worth, this isn't part of a larger design. That's just my, my two cents.
Thanks, Dean. Aaron?
I just want to say, Ms. Wilson, you were being very kind to me. I did not call you back, I was supposed to. I lost your phone number, I'll be honest with you. I was supposed to call you back, and I did not, so I'm guilty for not calling you back because of that, sorry. That's it.
I just want to say, we did, we did shorten the route about, because of the budget, and we cut the fireworks. The only reason they went on was because Groton Utilities footed the bill, but, I mean, we didn't, I don't, I don't recall us discussing which route we were going to take.
That's not us, that was a police thing.
That was Parks and Rec. But I think part, I was part of that sub-century thing. I think part of, it was probably driven because those subs were in that parade last year, and there was a plan for them to end up out at the Groton Plaza. So I think it drove it to that end. No, I know, but there was, there was a thing happening with the subs there at the end, so they couldn't move, they couldn't start it at Puquonic and end earlier.
May I say that we, as people, privately...
Hold on, hold on. You guys are, if you're spoke, if there's a question that comes up, you're allowed to respond to the question?
I just want to say there were alternatives that no one cared to hear about, that's all. We were going to pay for it ourselves, the police.
Gotcha.
The police, Mr. Brown responds that, "Yeah, why not?" But we had, we had, we had donations to continue the parade from where it started.
Gotcha.
For the last forty-seven, fifty years.
Well, I, we...
And they would share it with us, because we didn't have a chance to...
Aw.
You're right, we, sorry.
Anything else? Deb?
Just for clarification purposes, I've never called anybody a liar. But there were people that had an impression, when people went to their door, that if they did not like, towards the vote, they were not welcome to come. That was their impression, and that's what...
Wait, please.
I'm just sharing what somebody on that route impression was.
Let me give you the name, and I'll scrape it out for you, and I'll talk to them.
I don't think that's appropriate.
And I'll say it's appropriate for you, it's no thing's out here.
I never called anybody...
Point of order, just hold on, so you, we can't...
I apologize, you know what? I'm out of here. Thank you so much, the remainder of the folks, because I can't deal with this craziness.
Okay. It's harsh. Mail?
I've got a headache, it's going to get worse.
Consent calendar, would you like to move the consent calendar?
I'd like to move the consent calendar.
Second.
We have a motion in a second to move the consent calendar, any discussion? Seeing that all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? That passes six to zero zero. Communications? Counselor Murawski?
Other than the budget meetings, I have nothing to report.
Bonnie?
I probably have something, but I can't think of it tonight.
Harry?
I have mine written down.
Nice.
I'm ready to go, so. I've only been to three things that I can think of. I did go to the fundraiser for the Groton Little League last Saturday night at Mystic Indoor Sports. Great night, comedian, it was all about raising money to put lights on Burrows Field. And I did read, as the mayor has mentioned earlier, two proclamations, one for Earth Day and one for opening day of Little League.
Okay. Thank you. Dean?
Other than all the budget hearings and quite a few emails and other messages regarding this year's budget, and I believe, going all the way back to April sixth, I was one of the three counselors to meet with the three city counselors regarding the highway budget, that's sort of it for my communications.
Thank you. Deb?
Nothing to report.
I went to a bunch of meetings, a bunch of budget meetings, a bunch of different things going on, got a lot of emails regarding the budget and the Board of Ed.
I forgot, we went to Arbor Day.
We went to Arbor Day, just a few days ago, it was lovely. We also are being given the cog, really. Southeastern Connecticut is being named a great American defense community. And we, there's being, an award being given, and there's a, there's a potential for somebody from the council, if they so desired, to go to the National Conference of Something or Others, Association of Defense Communities. And they are going to be giving this award, and it's an opportunity for somebody from the council, should they want to be there, there may be space for them to...
Where is it?
To go, it's in Washington DC.
When is it?
It's the nineteenth, the twentieth and twenty-first, I believe. It's a night and the next morning.
I'm going to be down there, that's too bad, I'm going to be down...
I'm going to be down there, the 16th to the 18th.
You want to extend?
Perfect. I already have my ticket.
So anybody think about it, because it's a nice, nice little thing. And it was, it was really put, nominated by Connecticut Office of Military Affairs Director Bob Ross, and worked hard to get this, I think there's only six in the country given, or seven? Six in the country given.
I'd be interested. Let me see if I can change my flight.
All right, we'll talk about it.
It's the 20th?
I think it's 20, 21st. I think it was a night and a morning.
Okay.
So that's out there. And then that's really all I have. It's been, it's been a very trying couple of weeks, is all I can tell you. Clerk of the RTM?
Okay, the RTM annual meeting began last night, which was May 1st, and will continue until they finish, which must be by midnight, May 28th, 2017. They're working on the 2018 proposed budget. There were 23 citizens' petitions that were presented to the RTM. And they reviewed accounts for legislative policy, town clerk, legal services, executive management, finance, the finance. The next annual meet, or, excuse me, the next annual meeting session is scheduled for May 4th at the Groton Senior Center at 7:00 PM. And their next regular meeting is scheduled for May 10th at the Groton Senior Center. That begins at 7:30. So 7 o'clock for the regular sessions, 7:30 for the, for the regular meeting. And then the annual meeting will continue after the regular RTM meeting, so. I don't know, it sounds confusing.
The next budget meeting, though, is Thursday, right?
Yeah, the Thursday, May 4th, correct.
Okay, gotcha.
Okay.
And then the clerk of the council?
I'm just going to, you know, there's so many things that you already have as regards to communications I've been forwarding. We've got quite a bit of activity with boards and commissions, which I forwarded also to Personnel Committee. And the other item is MASH, which is Mystic Area Shelter and Hospitality, is having their annual event this Friday at the Latitudes Restaurant in Mystic. And the theme is a tailgate party. And so you're, you're to wear your favorite jersey.
I'll be wearing Patriots.
And jeans and sneakers. Okay. It's a, it's a fun night, and it's for a good cause. That's it. Thank you.
Deb?
I just want to make one comment. We had the Personnel and Appointments Committee meeting earlier tonight, and Ed Stebbins came in for reappointment to the Zoning Board of Appeals. He made an interesting comment to us, that they have been without an alternate, two alternate positions for six years. Six years. I was complete, all of us were just completely taken aback by that. So anybody out there with a little time to volunteer and help with some of those zoning appeals, it would be greatly appreciated to help them fill that position. Thank you.
Town manager?
Yes, just a couple of reminders, or items that were in the weekly status report of upcoming events, in addition to the one that the town clerk just mentioned, that MASH is having on the 5th. A couple other ones that you may want to keep in mind. On May 20th, TBCCA is having their Carnival Celebration Gala over at Mohegan Sun Casino. This is a fundraiser. And it's in your, this is in the April 13th weekly status report. Also, in that weekly status report was the notification of the Chamber of Commerce Citizen of the Year Award this year, which is honoring Mary Lenzini. Mary was here a couple weeks ago with respect to the visiting nurses' budget request. And that is on May 31st at 6:00 PM at the Mystic Marriott. I'm missing something here. Also, on, this would be on May 19th, we have gotten an invite for this year's Connecticut Armed Services, Armed Forces Day luncheon on May 19th at 11:00 AM at Aquatour up in Southington. I know a number of you have gone to that in the past. And also, this, this Friday at 2 o'clock, and for those of you who came to the Jim Streeter, Jim Streeter Room dedication a number of weeks ago, around a month ago, you were given a preview of a time capsule that the Hillary Company has fabricated, Joe Dela Cruz and his company have fabricated. And there's a ceremony this Friday at 2:00 AM.
2:00 PM.
2:00 PM, I'm sorry.
There'll be a big crowd at 2:00 AM.
2:00 PM over at the library. The, it's planned that the capsule would be opened on May 5th in 2055, which is the 350th anniversary of the time.
That's this Friday at 2:00 PM?
Yes. And then lastly, EDC, I'm sorry, the Economic and Community Development Division of the Connecticut Small Business Association will be having an open house on May 17th from 3:30 PM to 6:30 PM at the annex in this room. And that's all I have.
Okay. A couple of follow-up things, just for, is it Ms. Wilson? The parade will start at Paquonic this year, because it's on this letter that we have. He's not listening. Right? Well, that's okay. So it's the full route, if I'm reading this right?
Are you, I'm.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Just so you know, the parade this year, July 4th parade, will start at Paquonic and go all the way to the Groton Plaza.
I know.
Okay?
Okay.
Just FYI. And then I had a question about the streetlights, Mark. Is it, is it like, the streetlights on 117, I'm going to say north of 184, towards Ledgerd? Those are not changed over. Is that because they're Groton Utilities? Actually, I think it's south too. It's all on 117.
Yeah, that's, that's Groton Utilities.
Okay.
Basically, the electrical franchise area is in between Route 117 and Flanders Road. Goes cross-country there, north to south.
Okay. And we, as we spoke before, we're reaching out to them to see about.
I had sent a letter to Groton Utilities a month and a half ago or so, letting them know that we were wrapping up our, the LED street lighting project on the east side of town, and was asking for an update or a status, and encouraging them to proceed with, with their plans to do an LED upgrade also.
And we haven't heard?
I have not heard back. I'll reach out.
Okay.
Harry? I was going to ask, please reach out, because it didn't take us a long time to do it. The number I remember was $35,000 a year savings, or something like that.
Pretty significant savings. The overall project, though, had around, was a little bit over $400,000, which were.
Yeah, but there's a four-year payback.
Correct.
So, I mean, the longer we wait, the less.
Yeah, I think the actual savings was a little bit more than that. And we're using those dollars basically to pay off the capital costs.
Okay. So it goes to committee reports, Chairman Watson, Personnel and Appointments?
Yes, thank you. I will briefly summarize our meeting of the 4th of April, because they're on our agenda tonight. Clint Kennedy was recommended for appointment to the Library Board. Ray Mund, we actually interviewed on the phone for reappointment to the Planning Commission. And, and we reviewed our ongoing appointment policy. And that's about all we talked about, so.
Thank you. Committee of the whole met two times, and went over several different topics of conversation that some of them will be voted upon this evening. That brings us to new business. Harry, can you take the first two, please?
Sure. You caught me. I'm ready, but I will do it. No, I'm ready. I'm ready. I'm always ready. Let's see, I will, I'll move them both. It's a reappointment of Ray Mund to the Planning Commission, and appointment of Clint Kennedy to the Library Board.
Second.
Thank you.
We have a motion in a second.
So moved.
Any discussion? Seeing then all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? One abstention, that passes five to zero to one.
You can do it, too.
Bonnie, can you do the historic preservation?
Yes. 2017-0089, resolution authorizing the town manager to execute and deliver a contract for a historic document preservation grant. Whereas the town of Groton will benefit by the continuance of the historic document preservation program, which will be enabled and enhanced by grant funding. Now therefore, be resolved that Mark R. Ofinger, town manager of the town of Groton, is empowered to execute and deliver in the name and on behalf of this municipality, a contract with the Connecticut State Library for a historic documents preservation grant. So moved.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing then all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? That passes six to zero to zero. Consul Marassa, can you do 0093, please?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. 2017-0093, Small Harbor Improvement Projects SHIPP grant nautilus dock extension. A resolution to endorse the Small Harbor Improvement Projects Grant, Program Grant, application for design and construction of a water taxi dock at the Submarine Force Library and Museum. Whereas the state of Connecticut Port Authority has recently introduced the Small Harbor Improvement Program to provide grant in aid. And whereas the Connecticut Port Authority is seeking to generate a pool of prospective harbor improvement projects for consideration of funding under the competitive grant program. And whereas any municipality may undertake a harbor improvement project. And whereas the design and construction of appropriate dock facilities attached to the existing USS Nautilus mooring pier would permit water taxi service at that location. And whereas water taxi service would allow the Submarine Force Library and Museum to serve as a key component of the Thames River Heritage Park, increasing visitation and visibility of the museum. And now therefore, be it resolved that the town council hereby endorses the application to Connecticut Port Authority for the grant funding for the design and construction of the nautilus dock through the Small Harbor Improvement Program. I so move.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Is there any further discussion on this? Seeing then all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? That passes six to zero to zero. Counselor Harazadi, could you do the fourth quarter transfers?
Sure. 70, 2017-0095, resolution for FYE 2017 fourth quarter transfers. Whereas the town charter provides for supplemental appropriations to adopted budgets and transfers from the contingency fund during the year-end. And whereas the town charter also provides for the transfer of funds from one departmental function to another departmental function during the last three months of the fiscal year. And whereas transfers are necessary and represent unforeseen or unexpected expenditures at the time of the FYE 2017 budget was adopted. Now therefore, be it resolved that transfers totaling $276,195 be transferred from contingency account number 1074 to the following general fund departments, functions, and transfers of $10,000 or more are referred to the RTM for approval. Legal services, $89,500 for costs associated with miscellaneous litigation. Human resources, $21,987. Retirement of a long-term employee. Insurance and claims, $26,598. Deductibles for insurance claims. Self-funded plans, $4,000. Town contribution to ICMA for new employees. Finance, $39,301. Retirement of three long-term employees. Emergency communications, $14,600. Equipment repairs and overtime due to employee resignation. Public safety, $80,209 for employee retirements and resignations. This should all be referred to the RTM. I so move. Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Mark, on the, on the public safety, is that, and it says employee retirements and resignations, so that's payout of time? Is that what that is?
Correct.
Okay. Do you know how many employees it was?
No. I believe it was in the committee, the whole agenda. I did not bring that with me. It was a number of them.
All right. All right. Any other discussion? Seeing then all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? That passes six to zero to zero. Consul Antipas, can you do the damaged police vehicle?
Certainly. Referral, 2017-0097, resolution authorizing the purchase of a new vehicle to replace totaled cruiser using existing funds of $25,758 in a contingency transfer and a fleet fund supplemental appropriation for the additional $4,730 needed. Whereas on November 11th, 2016, an officer was traveling on Gulf Shore Highway when a deer ran out in the road, causing an unavoidable collision. The blue cruiser sustained disabling damage and was deemed totaled. Whereas the total cost of a new vehicle is $30,488, $28,148 for the vehicle, and $2,340 to reinstall equipment. And whereas the town received an insurance payout in the amount of $16,230, and there is a balance of $9,528 in account 60400-5420, leaving a shortfall of $4,730 for this purchase. And whereas a requested contingency transfer and fleet fund supplemental appropriation of $4,730 is needed for the remaining funds necessary to purchase the vehicle. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Groton Town Police Department is authorized to purchase a new vehicle to replace a totaled cruiser, and approves a contingency transfer to general fund function 1077, contributions to other funds, fleet, and a fleet fund supplemental appropriation to account 60400-5420 for the additional $4,730. I so move.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Bonnie?
Yeah, as I recall, when Chief Osara was talking to us about this, wasn't it a pretty new vehicle?
Yep.
Why would we only get $16,230 for a new vehicle from insurance?
Probably, all, for the most part, all the patrol vehicles are fairly new. They just have a lot of miles on them, because they get used essentially 24/7. I don't have a specific answer for you. That's what the insurance company said the vehicle was worth. So it's, it's like taking your own personal vehicle and having an accident, unfortunately, within the first year or two, without having probably as many miles on it as a police vehicle. You're going to lose.
Any questions? Seeing then all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? That passes six to zero to zero. Harry, you do the last one.
Sure. Resolution approving a tentative agreement between the town of Groton and supervisory employees, local 818 of Council Number Four, Ask Me, AFVL-CIO, July 1, 2016 to June 30, 2019. Whereas the town of Groton and Groton Supervisory Employees, local 818 of Council Four, Ask Me, AFVL-CIO, reached a tentative agreement on a successor collective bargaining agreement for the term July 1, 2016 to June 30, 2019. Whereas the bargaining unit membership voted to approve the agreement. And whereas, approval is recommended by the town's negotiators, therefore be it resolved, the town council hereby approves agreement with, agreement and the expenditure of funds necessary to implement the agreement between the town of Groton and the Groton Supervisory Employees, local 818 of Council Number Four, Ask Me, AFVL-CIO, July 1, 2016 to June 30, 2019. I so move.
Second.
A motion in a second. Any discussion on this? Seeing then all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? That passes six to zero to zero. Anybody else? Bonnie?
I just had a question to the town clerk. How come we didn't get the minutes from, we've got minutes from a meeting after the Board of Ed meeting on Friday, the 26th, but we didn't get the 21st?
I really can't speak to that because I didn't do, you know, I don't get those minutes. That's, are you talking about budget meeting minutes?
Yeah.
Okay. So I think Robin Molding was doing those minutes. So I know I, I have access to them.
Well, we have, we have one after that Board of Ed in this packet, but the one from the 21st isn't in there. From that Friday night meeting.
Let me, let me look and, I can get that for you. I just, I don't.
You would only have here town council minutes, not committee, the whole, or budget in its sphere.
Oh, okay. Okay. But if you're saying that your last packet didn't have it in it?
I don't, I don't think so.
Well, I'll look into it, and I'll, I'll let you know.
I move with you, Jen.
Second.
With you. Thanks, everybody. Thanks.
Don't forget about.